Okay, good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, April 5. First order of business is the first selectman's report. And Kate, I'm sorry if I'm gonna steal anything that's in your report today. But first and foremost, I'd like to acknowledge the announcement of the retirement of Lieutenant George Chip Vatone. He will be retiring on May 1st of this year. Chip joined the Darien Police Department in 1983 with an auspicious group of new officers, including our own Chief Anderson, former Chief Osborne, the late Brian Wood, and David Dome. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the entire town of Darien, we thank Lieutenant Vatone for his 38 years of dedicated service to the town and wish him a very happy retirement. You probably have already heard that the Planning and Zoning Commission is holding a public hearing tomorrow evening on a number of zoning and housing bills that are important to our town. That public hearing begins at 7:30 PM. You can find the link on the agenda for the Planning and Zoning Meeting. There are a series of bills to which this public hearing will refer. And I can run through those for anybody that's interested. It's Senate Bills 804, 1027, 1024, and 1068, as well as House Bills 5683, 6107, 6430, 6521, 6611, and 6613. Each speaker will have up to three minutes, and the public hearing portion of the meeting will be limited to only one hour. Written testimony is also encouraged and can be sent to dariempzc@darienct.gov. I believe this is just in an effort for the Planning and Zoning Commission to hear from the public on important zoning and housing matters. There's certainly been a lot of information about that in the public. So if you wish to testify, please do so. Kate, will you be reporting on the tax deferrals, or should I go ahead and do that?
You can go ahead and do that, that's fine.
Okay, so our tax collector Kathy Larkins reported today that $893,672 of the $927,292 that were deferred have been paid. There's one commercial property and three residential properties that still have outstanding balances, but Kathy feels confident that those amounts will be collected. The collection rate for this year stands at 99.31% versus 99.33% from last year. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I'll be hosting the Rowan Center out in front of Darien Town Hall on Wednesday, April 7th, from 10 to 11 for the kickoff event. If you plan to attend, and the public is welcome to do so, you must park in the lower lot at Town Hall, wear a mask, and keep a safe distance. There will be a number of my mayoral and first selectman colleagues here, along with a number of our legislative representatives for this important event. And in terms of our vaccine project, we have administered over 4,000 doses of vaccine in our local clinics. On Saturday, 662nd doses were given to Darien teachers and staff. Student clinics will be considered when the state authorizes us to do so. Right now, only Alliance districts have been given approval to organize student-only vaccine clinics. When the time comes, Darien has 900 eligible students, and we hope that we can accommodate that when the state allows us to do so and when we get enough Pfizer vaccine to put those wheels in motion. That's it for me, Kate.
So things are pretty busy around here. As you know, we've come to a tentative agreement on a contract with the APSME Union, although the union has not yet ratified it. So we won't be ratifying, or we won't be approving it until after they ratify. We are about...
Come, sorry, can you clarify who that body is, rather than the...
Oh, that, I'm sorry, APSME is the Public Works and Park Creation Laborers Union. We are about to start negotiations with the Town Hall Union. So we're gonna be having a work session for our team, and then we have our first session with them, the union, in a couple of weeks. We've had some internal renovations going on. The employee lounge is being worked on. The front stairs project should begin in about a month. So you'll see that happening. We've had some retirements in the planning and zoning area and parking. So HR is busy with the hiring process there. So things are really very busy around here. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Board liaisons on reports. Anything, nothing from Thriving Youth and nothing from Light? Kip, Building Committee for Ox Ridge.
I was out of town for two weeks, and progress continues, but I'll have a more thorough report in two weeks. We're in the process right now, trying to get the ever-source easement approved and so we can get the new power line put in. Once again, we need to have the easement approved eventually by the RTM, as well as needing DOT approval to cross the road with our power. Other than that, we're continuing to make progress on the project, and I'll have a better report for you in two weeks.
Okay, thank you very much. Kate, is there any public comment for today's meeting? Oh, sorry, I see Krista with her hand up.
Yeah, sorry, though the, I just wanted to update everyone, though the Pear Tree Point Committee has not met in several months. We did get communication from our chair that the Army Corps of Engineer has approved the plan submitted by Weston and Sampson to dredge the area, the waters there. And so once the samples are taken, they will be sent back to the Army Corps of Engineer, and based on analysis of the samples, will either be given a green light for the dredging plan, or if issues are found, denied permission or directed to take initial steps. Based upon that follow-up, we will look forward to the larger project of raising the parking lot, fixing the boat ramp, or expanding the West Beach.
So Krista... Sorry, just a clarification. We didn't actually receive approvals to dredge, we just received approvals to test.
The approval plan to test.
Great, okay, thank you.
Plan to test, so once we have the samples, that will determine our next step.
Perfect. Good news.
Krista, could I just clarify really quickly? I interpreted your comment to mean, if we go forward with the samples and we get the approval for the dredging, that we will entertain doing the project of the boat ramp, the parking lot, and the West Beach as the initial portion.
Let me restate, they've approved the plan to dredge.
No, to test.
To test.
I'm sorry, to test. They've approved the plan in how we are going to collect the samples. The collection plan has been approved. We are going to move forward with collecting based upon the results of those collections. So that's the second step.
Right.
Nothing's gonna happen until we get results back of the samples.
Oh, Krista, I think something just happened with your audio. It got very loud for a brief second. So just to follow on, David, I think I know where your thought process is going. I've reached out to Lori Bora, and I have asked her to secure permission in a public meeting to talk about their thoughts about the project moving forward. I know that they're very committed to this phase, doing the testing, but what's yet to come, I think, needs codification on the part of the Parks and Rec Commission. It's been some time, so, you know, I think that they just need to take it up and to rediscuss and make sure that everybody who's currently on the Building Committee wants to stay, or if there needs to be adjustments made. So I have asked her to put that on her agenda as a discussion. Okay, Krista, anything further you'd like to report?
No, that was just an email communication that I thought to share with the group.
Okay, thank you. Thanks so much. Okay, Kate, is there any public comment for today? You're on mute, Kate.
I did not receive any.
Okay.
You have three members of the RTM present. I don't know if any of them wanted to comment.
All right, so I see members of the RTM. Now would be your time, if you'd like to make any public comment to us. Hopefully, you heard that we will not be taking up the Public Works contract today as it has not yet been ratified by the union itself. So if you want to speak, please unmute yourself, we'll recognize you.
Well, Jack is saying no.
Okay. I don't see anyone unmuting themselves, so we will move on. And we are going to move into executive session. So Kate, can you help us technologically do that? So I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session. Sarah moves, may I have a second? Kip seconds, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, great, okay.
So we have to ask the non-members to leave. There we go.
Okay, there we go, TV 79 is back. We're back in our open session. So we will move on to our new business. We are going to be holding on item number one, the discuss and take action to recommend the approval of the contract with APSME. That will come back to the Board of Selectmen in early May. We'll announce those details when they become available. So we'll move to item number two, which is discussion on town policies regarding the acceptance of gifts. And Kate, thank you very much for all of the background information that you provided here with the gift policy, stuff that's in the charter and your things that we should consider. You know, I'd like to open up the discussion with kind of the overarching idea that I believe the town should have a single policy. And I don't favor micromanaging, meaning that I don't know that the Board of Selectmen needs to approve every gift, but I believe there should be a system of reporting of gifts that are received to both the Board of Selectmen and importantly, the Board of Finance. And certainly to the town administrator and the finance director to make sure that, you know, gifts that are being received, that they're in, you know, in good legal order. The one thing that was notable to me, for example, is in our charter, we have in Section 27 and 38, and then the ordinances, we've got Parks and Recreation, Human Services, and the Commission on Aging. I know that we have staff that assists these three entities in the work that they do. And I feel good that we have staff that works closely with these entities when it comes to receiving and communicating about gifts. Although, I don't know if we're following this practice of the commissions actually voting to receive the gifts. But following my train of thought for a moment on the one issue, if you look at beautification and monuments and ceremonies, we don't really have a staff person that's involved with the workings of those two bodies. And so there's a little bit less oversight in terms of gifts that are received. So I just put that on the table as something that I think needs to be cleaned up a little bit. And I would suggest that, I'm not sure we're exactly following the process as outlined by the charter anyway, at the moment. Would you clarify that?
I would say with those commissions that have staff, as you said, we're not always following that policy. And I did ask Town Council about that, and he, seeing under my suggestions, they can't do that, they can't delegate their authority to the staff. So I do think you ought to come up with a way, you ought to come up with a way to address those kind of issues, not have to go to the commissions for every hundred-dollar gift that comes in. It's not efficient.
Well, I do agree with that, but let's take, for example, the Human Service Commission. All the small gifts that the staff, the department receives, whether it's in gift cards or donations and backpacks and back-to-school things, household supplies, et cetera. I'd like to make sure that there is some kind of a way to account for all those gifts and then to be reported on an aggregate basis, maybe. I think, I'm also concerned that, I want to make sure that we are always acknowledging a gift that's given to the town in some way by a letter of acknowledgement and thanks. So those are a couple of my high-level issues. I think one gift policy would be beneficial. That extends to all of the different departments and commissions of the town, but I'm open to hearing comments from the board.
I think this, what you've put together, makes a lot of sense. I like that we're empowering the different boards and commissions to do their own gift acceptance. I think all of this makes a lot of sense, it's good to have policy around this.
But I think you need to address the, there are some boards, for example, the Police Commission does not have the authority to accept gifts.
Right, I'm thinking that if we give them the power to be able to do that, I think that's the empowerment, I think that's what we're looking for. I go back to the example of the gift that the Police Commission received, it was the print or something, it was a value that they couldn't accept until we approved it, which doesn't make sense, right? Like, we want to be able to empower those, and I think that makes more sense.
Yeah, I think Jamie's right, a single policy applicable to any entity that we want to be allowed to accept gifts. I think allowing the Police Commission to accept gifts and be subject to the same rules and dollar limit as the other areas is appropriate. I like the idea of letting the finance director and town administrator accept gifts up to a certain dollar amount as well. And Kate, just check me on this. I thought I recalled at one point when Jen was doing the cleanup of the Reserve for Capital Non-Recurring Accounts, or maybe it was the F&amp;B project, that she sort of implemented the practice that if somebody gifts for a specific project or function, that when that project is deemed to be completed, if there's $500 left over, it will now automatically revert to the general fund, whereas previously, we didn't have that practice in place.
Correct, not to the general fund, I think, I'd have to look at the letter, but there's a standard letter that goes out that, you know, say, for example, you were giving to build a new boathouse, and we finished the project and we have some dollars left over, that it would be repurposed. But I'd have to go look at the letter, I don't think it goes to the general fund. I think it would still stay within the, you know, organization area that it was gifted to. But I'd have to check on that.
Okay, as long, listen, as long as, my main point is, as long as it gets cleaned up, right? So we don't end up with, you know, a laundry list of tiny accounts left over again.
All right, did we want to go through your suggestions or through the bullet points that you brought up for questions that we should consider?
Yes, I'd like to do that.
Okay, just so, just trying to frame how we want to...
Yep, so Kate has posed to us the question that, is $10,000 still the appropriate limit before requiring approval of the RTM? And really, in order to have that conversation, you know, how often do we receive gifts of over $10,000? And how often do we receive a number of smaller gifts that aggregate more than $10,000? And should those need to be approved by the RTM? So, you know, certainly in the area of Parks and Recreation, we often receive gifts that far exceed $10,000. So $10,000 seems to be a relatively small amount of money to require RTM approval. So I would be in favor of changing that number to further empower the missions. And I think I'm really looking at Kate and Jen to be part of the approval process for those gifts that might fall under whatever threshold we define.
With that $10,000 limit, you could, there are two ways you can go. Right now, under the charter, you have the authority to increase that limit by 25% on an annual basis, so you could go to $12,005 right now. Or you could recommend a wholesale change, which is a full, you know, that's an ordinance change. So just think about which way you want to go there.
Okay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Do we have a sense of where some of these gifts that might be hitting the $10,000 to $12,005 limit might be? I mean, I think it makes sense if we want to go incrementally up 25% every year without having to do an ordinance, I think that makes a lot of sense. But do we have a sense of how many gifts are over that $10,000 limit that are difficult for us?
You know, I think when they've been over the $10,000 limit, they tend to be really over it. I'm just gonna go see if I can, I'm trying to think about where I would have resolutions on the gifts. You know, the other question, this is really a Wayne question. If we, this example of the pickleball court, where they're raising about $40,000, $45,000, they're raising it and then giving it to us all at once. So that clearly goes to the RTM. But if we got, if we were accepting them $1,000 at a time, but it's going to aggregate to the $45,000, does that still apply? Does that $10,000? So looking at, you know, we had a vehicle from At Home that, you know, clearly that's over $10,000. The vest for Argo was in the $2,000 range, I think. You know, then we've had Flags, we've had the Land Trust gift. So really, what I see is they're either way over...
Or small.
Or small.
Krista?
So perhaps we, as we have the ability to make the change to $12,005 per charter, perhaps then we move forward with that with a recommendation to the RTM that we would either yea or nay support their decision to raise it to a higher number per ordinance. Because we obviously have no control over that, but...
Right, I like that, but I think you would probably want to give them a target.
Okay, and then give them a number, sure.
There's a bit of a process involved with that, you know, as I'm looking at Section 2-32, we have to vote on the 25% increase, and it has to be reported out to the Board of Finance within 10 days and to the RTM at their annual budget meeting. So if we were to want to do that, I would think that we would want to be doing that perhaps today, but we don't have, we didn't plan to vote on an agenda item today, so...
Can we amend the agenda?
We can't.
No.
Oh, it's a special meeting, we can't, nope.
Right, we can't. You know, honestly, I don't think it's a crisis.
Yeah.
So I really don't think today versus next year, like I said, the numbers tend to either be really over it or really under it. It's not like we're dealing with a lot of $9,000, $10,000, $11,000 gifts.
Right. And again, my real issue is having a single policy that everyone follows and a well-defined reporting mechanism for reporting the gifts that we have received. It seems a little complicated right now, and it's not easy to know who receives what gifts, if at all. So, you know, I don't want to make work for us, but I think that we need to do some streamlining of the process as it works today. Kip?
I'm working from the other way, I'm working from the bottom up. First of all, I think that there ought to be a level, I'm gonna suggest $2,500, which can be approved as long as it's reported to both Kate and Jen. Make a report that also to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. I think the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen ought to be informed by all these gifts. But I think there should be some minimal level which Kate and Jen can make the approval on behalf of the commission or whatever group it is that's receiving the gift. After that, then we have a number which each group can approve before it has to go to the RTM. I guess there's no other higher level, is there? Because it's all like, right now, it's all at $10,000. Did you want, for example, that the commissions can approve a level of here, and then the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance maybe together can approve a higher level? And then after that, it goes to the Board of, to the RTM? I'm just trying to get the hierarchy. But clearly, it seems to me at the base, you want a minimal level which can be approved by both Kate and Jen and reported back to the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen. I think both boards ought to get that, because it does affect spending within that particular area.
I support that.
And then how do we distinguish between those commissions whom you've mentioned who don't have staff? Do we still have, can we, would Kate approve those?
Yes.
But Kate and Jen can be the approving authorities, if you will.
Okay. And I think you needed to be, you need more than one person making the approvals. You know, there's a reason why we have the approvals period. And one of those is that you don't want to just accept every gift. And I think it's important that there be, if not a board oversight, then it needs to be, you know, you cannot have one individual acting alone to accept gifts.
Agreed. On the worst possible case, you're trying to avoid bribes.
Well, I wasn't thinking that, I was thinking more like, you know, there might be people, there might be a gift, and I think I have it in the, one of the suggestions, my suggestion number six, is that, you know, even with non-monetary gifts, there needs to be some kind of process to make sure that it's not going to incur future expenses.
Another good reason.
But you might have a gift that comes from somebody you do not want associated with the town.
Exactly. And you want to avoid the situation where you have a corrupt employee in the town, all of that.
Well, along those same lines, I think that while we like to give power to the town administrator and the finance director for approving gifts up to a certain threshold, they should be able to have their discretion to bring it. they should be able to have their discretion to bring it to the Board of Finance or the Board of Selectmen if there's any gift that they feel uncomfortable approving on their own.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So then we, are we thinking that we would change the level of approval at the Board of Selectmen level to whenever we can arrange for it, the 12,500 level? And, okay, I see some concurrence around that. In addition, would that be simply a Board of Selectmen approval? Or would that be a Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance approval? Is it a given that the Board of Finance has to approve what we do, Kate?
No. So there are two different things that happen. Well, the Board of Finance doesn't have to actually approve the gift. What the, the Board of Finance role is making an appropriation when there's a gift of money. So somebody, a while back, gave us at home in Darien, a vehicle, which the town actually owns, right? So that was a car. The Board of Finance did not have to approve that because it was not cash. But if somebody's giving us cash and it needs to be appropriated, then the Board of Finance has to approve the appropriation. Okay? And, you know, and just be, before I forget to remind you of all of this is, this is not just town departments. If it's a non-educational gift to the Board of Education, that comes under the town's approval process. So for example, when the scoreboards were put in or the turf fields were put in, those gifts had to go through the town's approval process.
Who makes a determination on what's educational and what isn't?
Oh, well, we actually had to bring in the town attorney on the scoreboard because I think there was some attempt to say it could be educational. But it's generally not, it's generally not a question.
Okay. I'm just thinking about exactly what Krista just said.
At a school?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that would be, that would be, I think mostly you'd probably be able to call that educational at a, at an elementary school. But like there were trees donated to the high school when it was being, you know, newly opened. Clearly not educational. Ball fields are clearly not educational.
Well, you could argue a ball field could be if a swing set is. But I don't, I think that's, that's for the school. But I think we do need to be careful of cash versus items. And I know that had been an issue with the Board of Ed. Are we accepting the money and we will do it? Or are we accepting the field and the gift is the field? So clearly is, and the impact upon future operating is very important.
Yeah, and you know, and actually, when you get something as large as the field, because it's a municipal project, that becomes problematic as well.
Okay, so to get us sort of back on track with this discussion, you know, I appreciate your suggestions, Kate. I think they're good ones. I think we need to build into the annual budget process kind of a formal review of that, of that, that limit of approval so that we can be in a position to address that or raise it if we need to by the time the annual budget meeting comes around. I support items one and two. And item number three, you know, I, I know it's a little bit of an arbitrary number, but I definitely support that number being $2,500, not $1,000 that can be approved.
At least.
Yeah.
At least.
I mean, I, I could be compelled to go higher than that, although I want to make sure that Kate and Jen are comfortable with that.
Yeah, that's a, our comfort level is important. I would not feel comfortable accepting a gift of $5,000 without the board.
Okay. Would you feel comfortable accepting a $2,500 gift?
I think I would. I'd like to discuss that with Jen.
Okay, sure. Yeah.
May I ask a question here? Kate, do you have any sense of, I'm sorry, I don't have the background, how other communities are accepting these? Your peers in Fairfield County, just taking you and Jen out of the conversation so it is your role or your position, obviously recognizing you're doing it, but so we can make this policy less personal?
I tried to get some information and, you know, did not get a lot of feedback on what other communities had done. So, no, I don't have a good sense.
Okay. I, I also support and, you know, would love to hear from others. I think, I think we're in concurrence about giving the police commission the same authority to accept gifts. But again, we're talking about the commission itself. We have to make sure that we really underscore that all these gifts have to be talked about in meetings and approved by the commissions of, of their jurisdiction. You know, I am a little bit also cognizant that sometimes gifts are received that really are things that should be in the, in the operating expense purview of the town. And, you know, I guess, I guess we address it by recognizing that, you know, if, for example, you know, we're given, I don't know, a gift to, to help support the work of our canines, that, you know, that might create an ongoing operating expense if we have to replace that item at some point in time. I always want to be mindful that, that we're not creating a community expectation that the community has to pay for things that the town as a whole should be paying for. I'm probably not articulating that well, but.
No, I think that's an important point, Jamie. I definitely, I think the PTOs find themselves in that problem when we have generous parents who always want to contribute and donate, but then all of a sudden, that family leaves the school district or the school and all of a sudden now the PTO has to assume that in their budgets. So no, I think it's a very important point.
I'm old enough to remember when that was the conversation about water coolers, right? And, and yes, periodic reporting, you know, certainly don't want it to be burdensome, but I think there should be some periodic reporting about gifts received from all of these different entities. And hopefully that information is flowing regularly to you and Jen, Kate, so that it shouldn't be difficult to report that back to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance.
It's the non-monetary gifts that are harder to manage.
So can we, can we attempt to put some kind of a, a reporting policy in place that the department has to keep a spreadsheet of such gifts?
Yes.
So it's easily reportable?
Yep.
Okay.
Would that be quarterly or monthly, do we think?
I think quarterly will probably be plenty.
Yeah. No more than quarterly.
Yeah. I mean, it could be something that Jen even includes in her quarterly financial report. So number six, let's talk about number six under Kate's recommendations, that non-monetary gifts may not be accepted without the approval of the Board of Selectmen and possibly the Board of Finance if such gift will result in an increase to the operating budget. So that, to me, that means there has to be a conversation that's had before a non-monetary gift is, is received, approved for receipt by the department or the commission. They have to check with you, you know, to, to help determine whether there could be an ongoing operating expense in the future.
Or capital.
Yes.
Yeah, and, you know, say somebody wanted to give Parks and Recreation a boat, for whatever reason. You know, that's something that you need to talk about. You know, if they wanted to give a vehicle to another department, they determine we have a need for, and I can't even imagine, but there are things that operating them will take a cost. And once we have them, you know, what's the expectation that we will continue to have one in perpetuity?
Well, we've had that exact situation, I believe. One example I can point to is one of the fire departments received a gift of the sea lates.
Okay.
And so, you know, that has become a piece of emergency response equipment. And, and we certainly, as, as a board, as a town, would want to know if we have an obligation to repair and replace them in the future.
Right. And it doesn't, what my point is to make the acceptance of the gift a fully informed acceptance.
Yes. I would agree with that. By accepting the gift, the town is accepting the burden of repair and replacement, right?
Yeah.
And possibly replacing it when it's worn out, possibly.
Possible. Correct. Yeah. Okay. As long as there can be, as we can build a policy that requires that, that pre-acceptance conversation with the town administrator and the finance director.
Right. Well, I think, you know, if we, if we build it in there, it's basically, this is not going to be accepted. You know, it, it changes their ability to accept gifts up to $10,000, for one. But, you know, the understanding, and the more concerning ones are the bigger dollar number ones. But in understanding that, no, you cannot accept that gift.
So, yeah, so we have talked about a couple of commissions and departments, but I don't see anything here that specifically talks about our other emergency response partners, like the fire departments.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good, you know, they're not town departments, they're separate entities. So I think you, you actually have a little bit more latitude, at least legally, in saying that we, you know, we won't, you know, yes, you accepted this big gift, but that does not obligate the town to pay for the operations. But that's, you know, legally versus, you know, what's everybody else's expectations? And, you know, it can happen.
Right. I think that deserves a little bit more thought.
Yeah. And theoretically, the Darien Fire Department donated a, an engine 20 years ago. And the town is being expected to replace it in a couple of years. Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to have some more conversations about how to address that in a meaningful way. We're certainly grateful for very generous contributions like that, but.
Yeah, yeah.
There, there needs to be a process around that. Okay. More work needs to be done on this, but I think we had a good conversation today. Does anyone have any additional questions about this agenda item?
May I just a question back on the gifts to the police department? Minor gifts, buying dinners, buying meals, buying, you know, the generosity of our community. How do those get handled?
Well, you know, if somebody's just sending over food, there's generally not a process for that. And we would consider that pretty minor. They do have a couple of gift funds that haven't had a lot of activity, but right now, if it's a small gift, they're accepted administratively and it goes right into the gift fund. So I'd say it's outside the bounds. We do have accounting for that, so I'm not, you know, I'd like the process to be changed and improved. I don't see a large danger there right now.
Okay, just, I, I just want to make sure, at least there is a, a record to a certain extent, certainly in departments where the nature of their role in the community, we'd like to have accounting of what's happening.
Yeah, I fully support, you know, all of our departments keeping a careful accounting of the gifts that they receive. And, and I think that we can define for them what, what that means, what does gifts mean? And then that way, we in the public can have access to that information as we need it.
Absolutely.
Okay. If there's nothing more on gifts today, then we'll move on to our old business, which is discuss proposed grant agreements. And I was, I mentioned to Kate earlier that I think we have a very comprehensive list of, of the things that we want for potential grant recipients and applicants to provide. I think we want to bundle this up a little bit nicer, you know, in, in a different way. You know, what, what are the things that, that they need to provide as part of their grant application? And then what are the things they're attesting to by making application to the town for a grant? You know, I was trying to figure out how to, how to sort these 23 or so items into different buckets for a way to present it as part of a grant application bundle. And I think that we'll, we'll be able to do that. But fundamentally, I think that we, and Krista, again, thank you for your work with Kate on this. I think we have a good basis for good applications going forward. I know, you know, Kip had mentioned to me that, you know, it sounds like a lot of information to provide for sometimes small grants, but, you know, I'm, I'm always very cognizant that we're talking about taxpayer dollars. And I think to have a really good thorough process in place is something that we should be able to provide to the taxpayers.
Right. And, you know, I think most of what we're asking for is not stuff that they would have to create specially for us. It's things they have, they should have.
Yeah. And thank you for carving out the over million dollar grant request. I think that deserves careful attention. So are there any items that you want to discuss? Yes, Sarah?
The only one that I think stands out tremendously, and Jamie, I agree with you that we could bundle like maybe two through five, right? Like here's a list of the financial documents that we need from you, right? And I think that makes sense. You could make that one and then just a small subset of listings. But number six, are we just saying, we're not going to tell you if you got it? You need to be following the budget process to determine whether or not you've been funded?
Yes. Hey, if that's not what you want, change it. But.
I mean, if we, if we have four grants, maybe we inform them, you have been approved for, I mean, but again, it's not till May until, you know, the Board of Finance needs to still vote on their budget. So whether it's finally approved, it's definitely a long process if they submit before December and then they don't know until May. And maybe we just say, we want people to tell you until.
Well, we could, yeah, we could do that, put in that we'll notify you by the end of May or something like that.
Yeah, because hopefully, with the, oh, that's right, it's not even Board of Finance, it's the RTM, sorry. It's, there's one more vote beyond that, my apologies.
I agree with that. I think there should be a proactive acknowledgement on the part of the town that they, they have been awarded their grant of, you know, X amount of money because that, we might have changed the amount of money.
Great. So how about if I change it to the town will notify you by June 1st?
Yep.
RTM would always be voting by then, right?
Yes, well.
Usually, yeah. Last year was.
In a non-pandemic year.
Right, right. Right, right. On or about June 1st, yeah, that's good.
Any other items that need further discussion?
I'm not clear why they, they have to reveal their purchasing policies other than being in compliance with Connecticut, State of Connecticut and Town Darien anti-discrimination policies.
Because I think we should know, my opinion, um, if the grant is significant, do they, um, are, do they bid things out or seek proposals? Um, I'm not saying that we are saying yea or nay on their purchasing policies, but they should inform the town what their policies are.
Even, even for the small grants?
Well, that's a good, you know,
To follow in that process, yeah, I think if we're gonna, they're gonna ask for $1,000, I don't need to, I don't think
So you want to put that in the over a million dollar category? Or do you want to have a third category?
I'd support moving that to over a million.
Find what number it was.
11.
Thank you.
Because you have 13, they must comply with town policies regarding bidding and conflicts of interest.
Yes.
So that's, it is, it is somewhat redundant to have the, both of those things. And I like the way you worded it in 13.
Okay.
Agreed.
So do you want to move both of those to the over a million dollars and consolidate it into one item?
Um, are they, are they really two separate things? You know, the, the, the bidding for the over a million dollars and the conflict of interest? Does that, does that apply to any grant?
I think the conflict of interest should apply. Bidding, not necessarily.
Okay, so I would
In there, well, no, I mean, to me, conflict of interest is, you're hiring your brother-in-law to do your electrical work. And, um,
I think we saw that in one of the commissions, so I think that probably should apply to all.
I would agree with that.
As a matter of fact, that might be where the abuse might really happen in the smaller grants.
So then we would just move the bidding policy to the over a million dollars?
Right, and leave the conflict of interest
For all.
Although, although I, you know, maybe we should talk about, maybe we should talk about the, the threshold for the specific items. Are we comfortable with those items one through three applying to grants for only things over a million dollars? Is that the appropriate threshold?
Well, so we go from, you know, we go from grants in the $50,000 range to the million dollar range.
But, you know, we don't, we don't really know what the future will bring in terms of grant requests. So I would rather think about it from, uh, you know, what our comfort level is in taking this, this issue of bidding, wanting to know their bidding process. At what level are we uncomfortable that we don't know their bidding process? I think is how I would ask that question.
So maybe change the over one million dollar category to a lower level.
Correct.
Gotcha.
And just staying on number 13, Kate, do we disclose somewhere easily for the applicant to see our bidding process?
Well, our bidding process is, you know, governed by statutes and charter that items over $10,000 have to be put out to bid.
Okay, just so, would that be posted somewhere for the applicant to easily see? For them reading this, a nonprofit in Fairfield County may read that and not
Yeah, I, I get your point, yeah, because, um, we should probably have a little booklet for some of these things that goes with it, like, you know, here's what our policy is.
Right, post it on the website, just so they could see to what you're referring when we're saying the town policy.
Yeah.
That's an aside, but just that it should be stated clearly so they do understand.
So you said something important there, Kate, that, you know, bidding has to happen for anything over $10,000. Maybe that's what this threshold needs to be.
Well
Well, so I think about where we are with our current gifts, right? And one of the gifts that we've done in the past, or grant, rather, excuse me, one of the grants that we've done in the past is the Depot one for $60,000. So that would hit that threshold. Are we saying that we need to then have all of their, purchasing their bidding policies fall in line with ours?
Yes.
I think, I don't get a vote, but I think that's, um, I think that's harsh. I think I would more look at either there's a dollar threshold or there's a percentage of your funding threshold. You know, if we're providing $50,000 to you, and that's all, pretty much your whole budget, versus we're providing, you know, $5,000 to you, but you're a, you know, $5 million organization, I'd, I'd rather demand more of that $5,000 group, I think.
You mean the $50,000, or it's the whole donation?
Well, with Do that to myself, when your whole budget is $50,000.
Right.
Kind of hard for you to be spending a lot where you're bidding, where you need to bid on our threshold. You know, if our threshold is $10,000. But if your budget is 5 million on an annual basis, you know, you should be doing some bidding.
Fair point.
Additional board thoughts on that? So you're, I think what I'm hearing you say is you're suggesting a change from the dollar threshold to a, you know, grant as a percentage of organization annual budget.
Right, because, um, we do ask, well, we don't ask it directly, but we ask them how much, you know, what are you asking for from Darien? And we're asking for their total budget. So we'd have to, you know, change that to this, you know, disclosing what percentage our funding is of their total budget. Or you're just looking at, maybe it's not looking at how much we're giving you, but what's your total budget?
You know, you can go round and round on this stuff because you're talking about operating capital, whatever.
Yeah.
I think you just ought to have a, you know, where you have, call it 100,000, or call it 150, or call it 200, anytime grant gets over a certain amount, the 990, and all these other niceties come into play. Below that, I'm, I'm afraid, for example, using your, your, the Depot as an example, their county would never pass muster. So, I mean, why, why, why do that? And, and the, and the organization to bring it up to accounting standards would spend a lot of money to do so. So I, I just, I think it's, you're gonna be, you're gonna be really tangling yourself up here if you try to do this or that. And this, choose a number above which you put more stringent requirements of, of reporting and or bidding. Below that, it's a little bit more flexible.
I can share the community fund uses a, a dollar threshold, I mean, in their process.
I mean, a grant, a grant threshold, a grant dollar threshold.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Do you know what that is, Krista?
5,000. So to Kip's point, I think if we're looking at percentages, while I agree with the concept, I think it, it, I think it would become more difficult to manage, and I, I think it's getting it a little muddy, but I think we have so much information from these organizations that we would, I think we would get a good sense as to whether or not we want to make this grant or not.
So I think, I think what I would like to do in the interest of, of kind of solidifying what I think we're all saying, I'd like to recommend that for any grants of $100,000 or more, these items apply. But I'd like to add a caveat to the policy in general, that the town has the authority to ask for any additional information that would assist the town in adjudicating the grant decision. That way, if there's, you know, if there's a grant for somebody who's either under that $100,000, but there's something that we feel like we want to see, we can go back and ask for that.
So Jamie, you would put everything on this list for grants over 1,000, 100,000?
The, the stuff that's, uh, the specific items that we had attributed to only over a million dollars.
Okay.
I would lower that to $100,000 or more. But I'm just, that's a, just a conversation starter to pick a number.
I think 100,000 sounds good.
Does anyone object to that?
Nope, I'm going with that.
Okay.
And, you know, if I could go back to Kip's point about, you know, some organizations that we give money to might have difficulty with the, you know, providing all this stuff. I think you have the flexibility to waive, and maybe that needs to be specifically added, but you can waive these requirements at any time.
I, I agree with that, that should be added to the language as well. We can waive requirements, or we can, we can impose additional requirements. Give out, give ourselves the ultimate flexibility if there's something else we want to see.
Jamie, if an organization comes to the town and you give them this list and say, here's your list of things you have to do to get a grant from us, they're gonna go, huh? Especially if they're a small organization. How do you, how do you whittle that down to say, well, no, no, don't worry about that, it's not all 23, it's just 10, or whatever.
You know, when you look at them, some of them are not, um,
They're not things they have to provide, Kip, some of them are just things they have to attest to.
Yeah, and, and some of them, there's, I think, a third bucket, like, number 16, the point that the, the grants are valid for one year and don't guarantee funding in the next.
I got that.
You know, so, um, I think better organization of the list will help make it clear that this isn't so onerous.
Right.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I think it's a formatting issue. I am a little bit less comfortable with the idea that we can wait, pardon me, waive, than do we get in a scenario where we waived it for some organizations and institutions and not others? And how do we justify that? Ultimately, it is the Board of Selectment's discretion, but does that put us in an uncomfortable position where we're holding some organizations to different standards?
I understand that point, Krista, that's a valid point. Okay. Yeah. Listen, uh, this is a work in progress, and there could be an organization that could come to us with a very legitimate reason why there's something on here that's difficult. I don't think we're looking to make anyone's life difficult, um, but we're looking to put order and process around grant requests. So I'm okay with not putting that in writing. Okay, is there anything else that we want to discuss? Do we feel like we're ready to vote on the fundamental components of this grant policy? And the grant request document?
You actually don't have a vote scheduled.
Oh, okay. Well, there'll be one. Hoping that by the next time this comes on our agenda, we'll be ready to take a vote on it and, and codify it as a process.
It looks good, thank you for your work, Kate.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to our appointments, we have the reappointment of our chief building official, Pete Solheim, for a term expiring on April 30th, 2025. May have a motion to approve Pete's reappointment. Sarah moves, may I have a second? Kip seconds. Uh, is there any further discussion about Pete's appointment? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, we have meeting minutes of our regular meeting, March 22nd. Corrections, additions. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented. Sarah moves, may I have a second? Krista seconds. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and our special meeting, oh, Kip abstains.
I wasn't there.
Yep. Um, our special meeting minutes of March 22nd. Entertain a motion to approve. Sarah moves, may I have a second? Krista seconds. Um, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, and Kip is abstaining. Okay, motion carries. Agenda review.
Kate?
Yes?
When will we be, be returning back to the charter revision discussion?
May.
Thank you.
Although one could argue that we are kind of talking about that, like with the gift policy.
Yep.
It's kind of all part of that
Absolutely.
Review.
And I hope to have the snow ordinance be some things for you to consider in May.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else for agenda review? No, okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Sarah moves, may I have a second? Krista seconds, all those in favor say aye.
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 Next meeting is our joint department heads meeting on April 20th.
And I'm sorry, did it all be virtual or?
I believe it's virtual, right, Kate?
We're planning on virtual.
Yeah. And we'll make sure that we update everybody on what the town's decisions are regarding in-person meetings. You know, we're kind of in that, we're almost ready to do that. Okay? All right, thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.